Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones. Be advised, these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available on the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. So I'm going to go and call this meeting Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. And tonight, I'd like to, in remembrance of this meeting for 9/11, so we'll be honoring 9/11 victims. It seems like yesterday it happened, but that's what the meeting is going to be, in remembrance of the 9/11 victims in our country during that time. And, you know, just reflect on what you were doing during 9/11 and what it meant to you. So may we never forget. The invocation will be given by Pastor Mark Matthews from Grandview Baptist Church, and we're having a special presentation of colors by Troop 40, and they'll be doing that right after the invocation, so please stand.
Let's go to God in prayer. Father, we do want to remember many years back, the attack on our country. Many lives were lost, and many more were lost and hurt in war as we went and pursued those that did that to our country. Lord, I pray that you would draw us back to yourself again. As we experienced during that time, there was a unity across this nation that was incredible, and that's been fractured, and I ask you for that unity again. We're in an election season, and things run hot during that time, but I pray that you would keep things civil. There's an election even in our city here. Pray that you would be in that as well. Protect those that lead us, from the mayor to the council members, all the way down to the support staff. We pray for them, ask for your protection over them, keep them from harm, and draw them to yourself. And we give you this evening, and we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mark, and thank you, Troop 40. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Sabino Zapson, may I, you have a quorum?
Thank you. So Item A, reordering additions or removal, any items on agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Item B, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment any item not appearing on the regular agenda because of restricts contained in the California law. The city council may not discuss or act on any items on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request a matter of the agenda for future meetings. Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Bobby Forbes?
Ms. Forbes?
Good evening. I'd like to give an update on a meeting that was Saturday morning at the Neighborhood Market by Dr. G with the city council of Colton regarding the crematory that the city of Colton is bringing in. The air is going to come into Grand Terrace. It's going to go to our high school. It's going to come to my house. It's going to come to your house if you live in Grand Terrace or in La Loma Hills. And they say there's nothing they can do to stop it. So as residents, maybe there's something we can do after it's open. So please, pay attention. Attend city council meetings if you'd like to speak about it in opposition at Colton, not here. It's important that we, as residents, complain or have our say about things that go on around us, and that is on the border. It's within less than a half mile from Colton High School. It's 300 feet from houses or less. It's less than a half mile from my house, and I am in the direction that the wind is going to blow. It will be open, according to the owner, seven days a week. So if you don't know about it yet, you can reach out to me. I've been posting it on my Facebook page. You can get the information out of Colton, but they're pretty hush-hush about it at City Hall. So this is a big deal. Apparently crematories are a huge business now since COVID hit, and I don't want one next to my house or our high school or the development Louis Holmes is going to put in in Grand Terrace along the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Pam Lemos.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Pam Lemos, and I am a resident of Colton and neighbor to Grand Terrace in La Loma Hills. And I'm here to let you know, I'm going to talk a little bit about the crematorium in a second, but I did want to tell you that Lieutenant Lane and the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department have done a phenomenal job in our neighborhood. We are a combined neighborhood with Grand Terrace and Colton, and our Neighborhood Watch has done a pretty good job of staying connected with both Colton PD and the Sheriff's Department whenever we have intermixed issues over there. So it's really been a great help, and they've done a great service to the community. So I just wanted to share that with you all. That being said, being good neighbors is important. It's a part of our Neighborhood Watch, being good neighbors, because we have intertwining, like I said, with Grand Terrace and Colton. And I'm so sorry that you heard about the crematorium, because it's not something that we residents in Colton want, but we are also in opposition to the crematorium. And so if, again, like Bobby said, if you have the opportunity as a resident of Grand Terrace to go to a council meeting at Colton, there's power in numbers and voices. And so we can only hope and pray that if we attend and make our voices known that we're in opposition to this project, maybe we can do something. So I pray that that touches your heart and that you are interested in attending and speaking out against that on behalf of our neighborhoods, our residents, our kids, especially the high school and the other schools that are in the nearby area. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Cindy Bidney?
Okay, I'm sorry. One second. Okay. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today and to address some concerns that have arisen regarding the recent installation of a crematory facility near our residential area. Firstly, want to acknowledge the importance of having diverse services within our community and the role of such facilities to play. However, there are several issues that need to be carefully addressed. The air quality, one of the primary concerns is the potential impact on air quality. Although modern crematories are equipped with advanced filtration, it is crucial to monitor them, and that's something we're going to have to do ourselves. Noise pollution, another significant issue. Crematory operations can be very noisy, could disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhoods. We requested the council ensure there are strict noise control measures in place and that the facility adheres to the sound level. Property values, many residents are also worried about the potential impact on property values. The perception of living near the crematory can influence the real estate values and marketability. We hope that the council can address these concerns and work with local real estate experts to assess and mitigate the negative impacts. Cultural sensitivity, finally. It's important to recognize everybody's sensitivity to their own culture. So we really don't want to insult those people in the neighborhood or cause any riffraff between them. In conclusion, while we respect the necessity and functionality of a crematory, it is essential that its presence does not negatively affect the quality of life for nearby residents. We seek the council's support in addressing these concerns through regular monitoring, stringent regulations, and open communication with the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comment.
Ms. Mayor, I have a comment, sir, with your approval.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank Bobby Forbes and Cindy Bidney and others who have spoken on this issue with respect to the crematory in the city of Colton. We've had a number of different comments over the last several meetings, and a common thread in the comments is the lack of transparency on the part of the approving jurisdiction, which is the city of Colton. So I would urge those who are concerned to do a couple of different things. One, file public records requests and submit them to the city of Colton with respect to the environmental document that was reviewed and apparently approved by the city of Colton Planning Commission and city council. If there are issues that have been not formally considered, they will be noted in the environmental document. And so I think that's an appropriate approach to take and to confer with one another and to report, not report, but to address the planning commission and the city council as appropriate in the city of Colton. I have one question for the city manager. It's to whether or not the city of Colton circulated an environmental document that we had the opportunity to review and submit comments.
I don't know that we received a document on that. I don't think so.
That's another thing that maybe we can pursue at the staff level, along with the citizens trying to do their part. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. Do we have any other public comments?
No, sir.
Go ahead and close public comments. Special presentation, Boy Scout certificate recognition. Never did the flag presentation, so can I get David to come up to the podium and just provide information in the speaker's podium outlining the recipients and the recognition? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I am the scoutmaster of Troop 40 here in Grand Terrace, and with the thanks of the community of Grand Terrace, a lot of our local businesses, as well as the city council, we were able to facilitate taking our boys to summer camp this year in July. And it's called Camp Emerson in Idyllwild. We were able to take eight scouts with us. They had an amazing time. They were incredible representatives of our community, and they earned, I'm going to need some help here. They earned a combined total of 45 merit badges, each one of those ranging from lifesaving and swimming, first aid, to forestry, to environmental science, art, wood carving, all kinds of activities. They also earned a recognition for going on a five-mile hike, which in the middle of July in Idyllwild was about 100, I think it was the hottest day of the year in Idyllwild. And our boys went on a five-mile hike, which was incredible. And then we also received some marksman awards for shooting sports using 22 caliber rifles. They earned NRA marksman awards and BSA marksman awards. So we're very proud of the effort that the community gave us to allow our boys to do that. So thank you to Mayor Hussey for helping us get that taken care of, as well as Conrad, you helped too, and Don Larkin helped, a lot of help in the community getting this going for us. So we thank you guys very much.
All right, David, I'm going to say a couple of words here, then I'll let the council speak, then we'll bring you up and recognize the scouts who went there. But yeah, NRA provisional marksmanship, fingerprinting, emergency preparedness, wood carving. What's five and a dime, 22 caliber? Did you shoot five rounds in a dime?
Five rounds in the size of a dime, in the diameter.
How far?
Twenty, fifty yards? About 50 yards.
That's not with a scope or with iron sight?
That's with a iron sight.
Oh, wow.
No scope.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. Some of them, it was their first time using a 22 rifle. They've done BB guns before, but this is their first time with 22.
That's really good. I don't think my eyes can see a dime anymore. Back in the day in the Marine Corps, I'd do 500 yards with iron sights, but, you know, that was when I was younger. But search and rescue, so what do they do, practice findings, people, or they play hide and seek? What's going on there?
What do we do for search and rescue, Ethan? Yeah. Mock mission scenarios, how to use search and rescue?
So like tracking and stuff?
Yeah.
Compass reading, okay.
Some orienteering in there?
Environmental science, swimming, wilderness survival. How was that survival thing? Joe?
It was a bunch of fun. We went out into a location closer to where we were doing the five-mile hike, and we basically, there was a bunch of sticks on the ground, and you were given a certain amount of materials, such as a tarp, two bits of rope, and whatever was on the ground, and you had to basically build a shelter. So each different set of scouts, we were paired up. They came up with different ways on how to build the shelter. And so it was a bunch of fun. We learned also how to find our way in the dark and how to navigate, and we learned some orienteering skills. There was some fire making involved in it, and there was also more like preparedness in whatever environment you were going into for camping.
Well, that sounds like a good time.
If there's a public speaking award, you win.
We all want to go survival now. I mean, that's really good. Metalwork, all kinds of stuff. You guys are pretty busy there, huh?
Yeah, they were, they stayed incredibly active. There was no downtime.
So did you take any Girl Scout cookies with you?
We did not.
No?
Lots of beef jerky.
Because you guys sell popcorn, right? It's so hot right now, you could put the popcorn on the sidewalk, and it'll pop right there.
It probably would.
Okay, well, congratulations. And council, would you like to say anything for the troops? Councilman Henderson?
Very, very impressive. That's all I can say. I mean, I don't want to belabor, but it's a wonderful testament to our community and the support that you offer to the community and the support that you also receive from the community. So thank you for your time and effort, and thank you for the troop leader as well.
Councilman Allen?
Yeah, as I sit here and look out there at that row of young men there that just got back from this training, I just, I see our future leaders, and I just want you to know, you're on a great path. You fellows are on a great path. Please stay on it. Don't deviate off of it, because when you get to the destination, you're going to be so glad you did. And so thank you for setting the great example and a job well done.
So on that five-mile hike, did you guys sing cadence, or you just went for the hike? Sing cadence, you sing songs?
I think they just tried to survive.
I imagine, pretty hot and stuff.
Yeah, but they were amazing.
So what did you guys do after the five-mile hike? You went and got your swimming award? Is that what you did?
Yeah, we did a lot of swimming. They had a pool there, and the pool instructor was very nice. And so right after, we nearly all of us just got in the pool. It was hell on earth.
Thank you, Joe, for that.
All righty, hey. That's how we roll. He's going to be in the Marine Corps next.
Probably, yeah.
I know a recruiter. All right. Well, if we could have you come up here, sir, and the council, and we'll present these awards that you gave.
I'm also going to put another member of our troop on the spot, Mr. Jeff Fitzsimmons, coming up here, too, because Jeff was at summer camp with me all week long, keeping track of these boys, climbing mountains three and four times a day.
So you got to do this a five-hour thing if you wanted to or not, right?
It's a piece of cake after doing that for a week.
So how many five miles?
We did five miles every day.
Every day or more.
Up and down the hill every day, because the camp is about a mile from the bottom of camp to the top of camp, and we would go back and forth, just make sure the boys had everything they need several times a day. Wyatt Crandell earned the NRA provisional marksman award, the centennial loop hike, emergency preparedness, swimming, art, fingerprinting, forestry, wood carving, and wood carving, and the city of Grand Terrace congratulates you on your accomplishments. Our vocal representative, Joe Kennedy. Joe earned the NRA provisional marksman award, the centennial loop hike, environmental science, swimming, wilderness survival, metalwork, geocaching, and fingerprinting. He'll get public speaking soon. Trevor Ferncos earned the lifesaving, forestry, wood carving, American cultures merit badges. Evan Gill, our SPL, earned forestry, American cultures, fingerprinting, geocaching, and chess.
TJ Lariva earned the five and dime.
The 22 caliber shooting merit badge, centennial loop hike, astronomy, orienteering, environmental science, climbing, and fingerprinting. Ethan Fitzsimmons earned the five and dime, lifesaving, fingerprinting, orienteering, climbing, rifle, search and rescue merit badges, and fishing as well. Lex Nyman earned the centennial loop hike, first aid, swimming, pioneering, fingerprinting, and wood carving. And Max Davila earned the five and dime, emergency preparedness, communications, rifle, search and rescue, and wood carving.
So a quick question. What'd you guys carve? Did you make a big stick into a little toothpick, or what'd you guys make?
They carved some neckerchief slides, and Wyatt's got his on. It's an arrowhead.
Oh, wow.
Does anybody else have their neckerchief slides on that they carved? No?
I have one. It's at home.
It's at home, yeah. So they carved neckerchief slides for their scarves.
That's pretty good. How long did that take?
Wyatt, how long did yours take? The entire weekend.
Well, good job. Congratulations again, and let us know if the city can help in any other future camps, and we appreciate all that the troops do for our city, you know, leading the flags and our parade and everything else. And, you know, looking forward to your many years of services, you know, helping us, and we really appreciate it. You know, you guys are doing a good job, and just keep going. And, you know, like Councilman Allen said, you'd be the future leaders up here, so you could have my seat and make a whole $6.50 an hour, so. It's worth it. But anyway, congratulations, and I hope you guys had fun, and hopefully, everybody can go next year, and just let us know. Okay, Item D, consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine, and non-controversial, they'll be act upon the city council at one time without discussion. Any council staff member or citizens may request removal of the item from the consent calendar. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
No public comment.
All right. Do we have any, anyone be removed for discussion? No? Without that, can we get a motion in a second?
I'll move approval.
Second. Move approval by Councilman Henderson, second by Mayor Proton. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, Church of Fire, presented by Christine.
Good evening, mayor. Councilmembers Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So the city received a community benefit fund grant application from Church of Fire in Christ, and they're requesting $2,000 for their youth retreat. And Pastor Johnny Sandoval is here to speak on behalf of the church and answer any of your questions. And the application meets the requirements for approval. Mr. Sandoval?
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Yes, I'm Pastor Sandoval. We want to speak about the retreat. It's a retreat for youth. It kind of gives them an alternative motive of starting to look for streets and stuff like that. We kind of take them out of the city. And since I work for the district, I work for the school district, I'm a custodian, I kind of see a lot of the youth, and I kind of see what they deal with, kind of show them that, you know what? There's alternate routes to street life and stuff like that. They start looking for things that are kind of like the street, the, how can I say? They get influenced easy. Once, I lived in that life. I lived that life, and I found Christ, and I was able to, now I partake in showing them that there is an alternate route. There is, let's get out of the city, let's go camp, let's go show you what this, like, these guys, this is amazing. I wish I would have been able to grow up like that. And I show them that there is, there is an alternate route. You don't have to always be locked up in your room. You can go out, you can go camping, we could go fishing. We show them a little Bible study. We have little Bible studies, campfires, and stuff like that. Just, it's really what it's sort of about.
Okay, well, so where do you plan on going?
We're going to Lockleven on camp retreat.
Okay. And how many youth do you have going with you?
I would say around maybe 45 to 50.
That's great. And so it's open up to any youth that needs to be, that wants to go, or needs or having issues?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. And how many days are you guys going up there?
We're planning on going three days.
You planning on going fishing?
Yes. Fishing, there's a swimming pool, there's hiking, there's the whole thing.
I'll have to bring my fishing pole.
Yeah.
I'm not catching anything.
Right? I probably won't either.
All right, sounds pretty good. Does the council have any questions? None? Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, no questions, no public comment, and a motion?
Motion for approval.
I have a, Mayor, I have an alternate motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilmember Allen.
No, 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 Mayor. I didn't, I didn't second. I had an alternate motion.
Okay, go ahead. I have no second for the first motion? What's your motion?
Okay, I have an alternate motion. And my, my motion is this, that this item be continued to the next meeting. The reason for that is that in studying the agenda and in studying this, this item, I came across some recent Supreme Court decisions on the use of, you know, government funds to directly support religious entities and their activities. And so I wanna make sure that we're gonna do this where they can get the support that they want and need, and that we're not going to, you know, be walking any fine lines or any questionable things, you know, that, that... And I just would like for the city attorney to come back at the next meeting with...
Well, why don't the city attorney, do we have any recourse on this? Are we doing anything illegal providing these funds?
No, I had the opportunity to speak with Councilmember Allen a few minutes before the meeting, and he raised a case out of the state of Maine, a Supreme Court case. That case had to do with tuition vouchers. So, for example, the statute applied where, in rural areas where there not, may not be a secondary school available, the state provided vouchers to parents to utilize at, at their discretion to determine what school they wanna go to. But the rule for the state of Maine was it cannot be used for religious schools. And the Supreme Court came down and said, "Well, you're violating the free exercise clause of the Constitution, because people have the right to choose whatever religion they want to use, and you're, you're prohibiting effectively that exercise of that right." So there's a clear prohibition in this, in that case. Here, we're not prohibiting the use of the funds for a religious institution if we were to grant the community benefit funds. But Councilmember asked if I could look into it and see if, how that case may impact our decision. And so, if the council wants me to look at that, I'm happy to delve into it a little bit more.
See, in the congressional research report that I read on the, on the case, it talks about how Chief Justice Roberts and the Supreme Court looked at the case and said that, that there is a difference between direct and indirect support. And indirect support is something like using vouchers or a third party to support the entities that we wanna support. Direct support is using government funds to directly support. And, and, you know, for, ever since I've been on this council, and we've had these entities, church entities come here, and one of the things that's always asked of them, and I believe it's actually on that application, is about proselytization. And I remember in the past, that issue has been questioned at the, behind the dais here. And it's not fair. It would not be fair for us, to me, to ask this gentleman to not proselytize. For Pete's sake, that's the purpose of his organization. You know, and, and so for me to say, "Okay, you can, you can have some of our funds, but you just can't preach the word of God to your, to the people that you're..." I mean, that's like, are you gonna, you know, go to the gas station and say, "Okay, you can have a gas station, but you can't pump gas?" No, 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 you know? I mean, so, the point that I wanna make is, is that there are indirect ways that we can do this very quite simply and easily, I think, if we discuss it. And, but I think the, the most important thing would be that if we just extend it to the very next meeting and let the city attorney come back with that overall, you know, opinion on indirect versus direct support. So that's my alternate motion, that's all.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
That's your motion. Do I have a second for Councilmember Allen's motion? No. Mr. Flores, when is the camp?
I'll second Councilmember Allen's.
All right, we have a second. When's your camp, sir?
It should be coming up, I'm saying, within a month or two months from now.
So, October?
Yeah, October, November, we're trying to see. We're trying to get it between November one, two, and three, first, second, and third.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Allen to bring it back, a second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
We have two yes and two no.
Okay, so we go with the first motion?
Uh, yes, or any other motion?
And I'll second the first motion. Please vote.
Same. Two no and two yes.
Okay, so what do you wanna do?
Mr. Mayor, if I might. I'm a bit confused on the city attorney's assessment of this issue, because it has come up before. I've raised it in terms of proselytization. And it's never been clear to me whether we, whether our agreements prevent it, or whether they facilitate it, or whether they allow it explicitly. And so, this has nothing to do, in my view, with the application submitted. I'm supportive of that endeavor, but I think we need clarification on what is the appropriate course of action for the city in this regard when we would be providing direct assistance. And I would ask the city attorney to report back to the council in two weeks and to provide that clarification, hopefully so that we don't have to go through this issue again. Thank you.
Okay, well, we've been down this road before on this clarification, and if we are in trouble, then we have to take back all the money from all the other churches. Christine, you said this was okay?
Yes, Mayor, it met the requirements based on the community benefit fund.
So they met all requirements. Okay, and then the city attorney, you're, you're, do you need more time to look at this case, Lou?
I'm, I'm happy to do that. I mean, I can briefly give you my, my thoughts on it. So, the, the one issue we've always tried to balance is with the Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution, which prohibits the government from establishing an official religion or favoring one religion over another. I think that's really the key aspect of it. And by ensuring, you know, there have been requests in the past to make sure that there's no proselytization with use of public funds, that helps to assist the fact that we're not favoring any religion by allowing any one entity to proselytize. That's the thought process. Would it be defensible? I believe it would be defensible. Because, again, we're not, the city is not prohibiting the use of the funds for the, for any religious institution. They're, they're, we've given it to them in the past, and they're free to request it, and city council can approve it. So there's no restriction. It's not similar to the, the Maine case, where in that case, the state said, "No funds at all may be granted to the religious institution." So I, I don't see it as being the, the same cloth there. I do think that, that our, our path, our pattern of, of allowing it, but restricting the proselytization is consistent with the Establishment Clause.
But at least, if I understand Mr. Sandoval's comments, proselytizing is the primary and explicit activity. So how do you square that with what you just said?
So if, if that's the case, then we would need to allow it in every situation. So anytime a religious institution comes to us, we would have to allow it across the board.
Well, we haven't done that. We haven't allowed it across the board.
There, and that's why we've kept it on even keel on that end. But if we wanna flip it and say, "We are going to allow it across the board," then that, then I guess we could allow that potentially. I'd have to explore that to see if that would be consistent with the Establishment Clause.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes. In their application for these funds, it has, it states no agenda in relation to proselytizing. My thought pattern is, is that you can step off the curb and get killed just as easily as you could, you know, have somebody walk up to you on, on a curb and say, you know, "You should accept Jesus." We're not mindless individuals. We do have our free agency. Bottom line is, it's a three-day event where the youth will be out in the mountains and have activities that are fun. That's a positive thing. It has no religion tapped to it, and it says in it, "According to their application, we have many youth from the city or of Grand Terrace that attend church, and we help out with school, and they stay motivated and encouraged to keep success." What's wrong with that? Why are we questioning this? I think this is an area where it gets into a gray version, but we've already, we've already struck out on this road as the mayor brought up, to be at a retreat center, to have fun, to be a positive influence in lives. That's really what we're talking about. And I don't see a problem with that, so that's what I support.
Councilmember Allen?
So, thank, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. So, in all the, the study idea, this, 'cause I, again, I agree with everything Mayor Pro Tim just said. This is, what you wanted to do is a wonderful thing for the, for the youth. And I've, I did it when I was a kid. My sister and I...
We're gonna do it. We're gonna do it. We're trying to find means to do it.
So, 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 nobody up here is, certainly not me, is trying to downplay the significance of how important and how valuable something like this is, and how much I would like to see it happen. However, it boils back down to, and I know what the application said, Mayor Pro Tim, but I also know what the man who stood here just said. And, and I also know that if I were a pastor of a church, I could not, in good conscience, stand there and say, "I will not proselytize. That is my mission." And I cannot accept that one would do that, would, would even say that, and, and say, "Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take your money, and I promise I won't talk about Jesus." You know? It, because I, I have a hard time accepting it, 'cause I wouldn't be that way if I was a preacher. I'd say, "No, I'm gonna talk about Jesus every day, all day long, because that's what I would do. That's my job." And, and so, yeah, I, I just think that while we can find a way to support our churches and our, our organizations in this city through indirect funding, quite simply and quite easily. And I just think that that's what we should, and, and we should consider that along with this Supreme Court decision, because it does specifically mention direct and indirect funding. Thank you. And, you know, another thing that I checked on is not just that. I checked on, I read the positions of the United States Catholic Church and the Church of the LDS, the Seventh Adventist Church, and all the churches in this community, and they all support strict separation.
Okay, so the item's dead, so what we're gonna have to do is give it back and come back to it. Anything else?
Yeah, we would, I guess, bring it back, and I can bring back an analysis with it.
So, Ms. Clayton, does he have to reapply when we come back?
I don't think he would have to reapply this. It would just be unfinished business at this point.
So we don't have a council meeting September, we gonna be?
The next one is October eighth.
What's that?
The second Tuesday of October.
Second Tuesday of October. Can we resolve it by then? Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Flores, we'll have to come back. To Councilmember Henderson, do you have something else to say? All right, so we're going to close that. Future agenda items, at this time, the city council may propose items to discuss any actions that fully duly agendaize, excuse me, city council meeting, cassette, or anybody. So do we have any future agenda items?
I do.
Councilmember Allen?
I just now thought of it, that I think it would be great that we bring back for a future agenda item that we have a discussion on in, on outside entity that we can tap to be the agency to fund organizations and handle requests like this, and that we can funnel our, our community benefit funds through that, into an entity, something like that, so we can meet the requirements and the, not just the strictness of the law, but the, the spirit of the law, and that all the entities that are represented in our spine city can be represented equally and equitably. Thank you.
All right. A second for that to move it forward?
I'll second.
All right, please vote.
Same outcome, two yes, two no.
Okay. City Council Communications, Councilmember Henderson?
Nothing to report, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. On September the fourth, I attended the Interagency Council on Homelessness Regional Steering Committee meeting. And at that meeting, we discussed resource mapping, how to partner to create bed count shelters. And we talked, we discussed partnerships with landlords and creating landlord incentives. And one of the neat things that happened also is the introduction of the San Bernardino Police Department's Peace Team, which is a lot like our HOPE team that the county uses. But, and the Peace Team is the, the San Bernardino Police Department's active homeless engagement resource team. And, and that was real interesting, listening, hearing what they had to say. Also, later that evening, I attended a town hall meeting with California State Insurance Commissioner Laura. And the purpose of the town hall meeting was to discuss the crisis in homeowners' insurance in the state and what he's doing about it. One, what he came, what he told us was, in the meeting, that the state is implementing and creating new technology that is forward-looking, creates a forward-looking catastrophic policy, and that they have a Safe From Wildfires program, which offers discounts to homeowners when homeowners do what's called hardening of their homes. He discussed the Fair Plan and the, the four different categories of, of homeowners' insurance that's offered in the state. And, of course, the category one, the most desirable, being those ever, those companies you see advertised on TV, the ones that are fleeing the state and drove... And then number two are the, there are some insurance companies that you don't see advertised. They're more like specialty companies. And then the third one is the Fair Plan. And the fourth one, which is the least desirable, is the, the mortgage-based property insurance. The one thing that he did stress was that jurisdictions should get the Fire Wise designation from, I wish our fire chief was here, we could ask him about that. And this would allow rate discounts. And one of the things that they would need to get the Fire Wise designation is to have a Fire Safe Council for the city, which is separate council from anything we have right now. He also said that he's hired a hundred new customer service representatives. So anybody who has an issue with homeowners' insurance should call his office, because they will get to talk with someone, and those people will help them find insurance. That's their task. That's what he, the, the point that he made. I think that that's, except for the chamber meeting tomorrow morning, which is gonna be right here in the community room with Senator Rosalio Choloboah. I hope I see everyone there. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
So the chamber meeting's from seven forty-five till nine, right?
Yeah, it's at this...
In the community center?
Yeah, room right next door here, in the, by the library.
Is the air conditioning working in there?
Have no idea.
It'll be cooler in the morning.
Okay. So everybody gets a cup of ice, is that the...
Yeah, iced coffee, that's it. Yeah, iced coffee, that's it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, do you have anything? I have a couple things, um... You probably, and this is probably still in Councilmember Allen's thunder, but everybody got this thing for the recycle program, and they're talking about what you can and cannot put inside your dumpsters and stuff. And I don't know if the, the trash police are going to be coming by, but I'm sure they stop the trucks and see how much food waste is going in there. But another thing on this, you know, uh, our city manager kind of enough to put our own dumpster here, but please do not, there's a little sign up there, even I got a couch in the back of my truck and I can't dump it there. Because we have to obey the regulations, otherwise we'll lose that dumpster. But don't take all the stuff, just read it, you can't leave it dishwasher there, barbecues and all that stuff. Just be cognizant and, you know, go to the dump if you have to. But Burt Tech, twice a year, will pick up a big ticket item. So all you gotta do is call them. I already used up my two twice a year, so that's why I gotta go to the dump. I'm on honeydew chores this month, so... But anyway, please be cognizant and, and be a good neighbor. And, you know, the dumpsters, so we don't have to go by and do cleanups. And I know we have a couple of homeless encampments, and the bad thing about the homeless encampments, they don't pick up after themselves. I don't know why, but they don't. And, uh, another thing is, um, speaking of communities, if you have a, a business in your home, you have to do the proper paperwork to have it approved in your home. And you have to be, you know, and if you have commercial, like plumbing business or anything, you have to be zoned for that. And you cannot have your own car garage. You cannot be working on multiple cars out there. You could work on your own car, and you could work on your classic car, but you can't have a business working on cars. There's a lot of regulations for that, you can't do the business forum over there, you know, preparing for a dealer. So the city's not harassing you, we are going after that because that's the place where residents are, that's their home. They don't want to hear cars go up and down and next thing you know, we got hazmat going around with oil and everything else and people coming by. But, you know, just be cognizant of your neighbors. Another thing, I, I drove to LA for the SCAG meeting on the Community Economic and Human Development Committee. Just to run off, we talked about the Rita, you know, and the housing and what the state is, you know, mandating the cities to do, a lot of mandatorys for that. A lot of council members are, you know, people are going after the council members thinking it's their fault, it's the state's mandate it. So the state mandates this stuff, what to do with housing and zoning and all this stuff, but the state doesn't want to give any funds. SCAG asked for funds to help with developers for these, now I'm going to say affordable housing. Every time when you say affordable housing, everybody thinks Section Eight. No, it's affordable housing, there's a lot of young family out there and the housing market's crazy, so it's affordable housing. So it went to, um, assembly in, in the Senate and it died. So they don't want to help with the developers to make affordable housing, but they want to go ahead and continue with mandates. So that was part of that. Plus, I enjoyed the two and a half drive, two and a half hour drive to LA that day, I had nothing better to do, so... But anyway, city manager, oh, and another thing, you know, um, the fires, you know, health and stuff, you know, please, you know, I think the, Co- and Joint Unified is putting out daily recommendations, you know, if they're, go to school or no school, so, you know, parents, make sure you sign up for that email and that, that verification on there. City manager?
Since, since you said the F-word, um, we have, within thirty minutes of us, a hundred thousand acres on fire. And this is, this is our warning to us as a community to cut back the brush if you're living someplace where there's, you're up against the mountain, um, trim your trees, pick up the trash around the house. It's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And it would be nice, when it happens, that we are prepared and that we've done the things to mitigate those damages that some of the communities, especially up on the mountain, are facing right now. And our, our thoughts and our hearts are out with the, the residents up there who are being evacuated, as well as, um, as you notice, our fire chief and no fire representative is here, they're busy doing other things, as the, the gentlemen that are up there and, and law enforcement, um, ta- taking care of the residents up there. So please clean up around the house, cut those brush back, cut those trees back, and then we, we don't have to be the next community on fire. And that's it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment?
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to emphasize what the city manager just, uh, talked about. My neighbor across the street, um, was required to spend fifteen thousand dollars on improvements and corrections to his lot before his insurance carrier would renew. So there were a whole series of conditions that they imposed upon him, and the cost of those conditions was fifteen thousand dollars, given the size of his lot where he's located at the end of the cul-de-sac and up against Blue Mountain. So I mention this because just a couple days ago, on my walk, I saw what I believe to be an insurance drone taking pictures of the neighborhood and homes and so on and so forth. So be advised, you want to beat the insurance companies to the punch, take care of your yards, uh, have your, I had to cut my trees back because my neighbor's, uh, insurance carrier had flown a drone over our, our two homes, or several homes actually, and they commented that they would not renew his, his, um, excuse me. Would not, would not renew his coverage until such time as I trimmed back the trees in my yard. So we took care of it and everything went according to plan. But across the street, cost fifteen thousand dollars, and you don't want to have to face that situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And they just canceled mine, so I'm on that Fair Play, so let's see, I hope, I hope I never have to use it, we'll find out, but, uh... Anyway, um, just going back to the fires, uh, if you want to volunteer, the Red Cross is taking volunteers, if you want to help out in the evacuation shelters. Also, if you want to help out in the void, they're having evacuation for animals. So if you want to volunteer, that's the best way to do is get a hold of American Red Cross and that's how you can help out. So closed session, none? So before we adjourn, I'd like to just have a moment of silence and remembrance of nine eleven and the, and our prayers for, um, firefighters and the first responders up there. So please join me in a moment of silence. Lord, I just ask that you just protect the firefighters and the residents up there and, and all the fire zones, God, that you just get everybody out safe and that you just, you know, call these fires, Lord, and do your will. And God bless the families from nine eleven, it was a terrible time in our nation, Lord, but, you know, and just, there's still families and survivors from that terrible day, plus from the war, God, and just be with them and give them comfort. Amen. Okay, the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-four, six P.M. Any requests that I have, I didn't place on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to city clerks. Everybody have a good night, God bless.